Okay, okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Gloria, if you can accept for the record that everyone is here. Okay, so first item, new business is with Kevin, it looks like, right Kevin?
Yes, thank you Mayor, members of City Council. This evening, I'm actually gonna turn this over to Dave Refner, Airport Manager, to do the presentation, and then when he's finished with his presentation, we'll be happy to stand for any questions.
Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. We're gonna be talking about commercial minimum standards for the airport. A little bit of history of why we're implementing these now, or asking to implement these now, is it's actually directly tied to skydiving at the airport. So we did develop some commercial minimum standards for skydiving in 2021, and very shortly after that, we realized that we needed to implement commercial minimum standards for all commercial activities at the airport to make it even and fair across the board. And a little bit of history, in 2013, there was a complaint filed against the city and the airport for economic discrimination and exclusive rights at the airport, which resulted in the airport losing grant eligibility for many years. It was a long process, and we've battled it out for quite some years. But where we're at now is our grants have been reinstated, and we're working on our first federal grant now. So we did reach resolution on that, and one of the items that came about during that process was implementing commercial minimum standards for the airport. What commercial minimum standards are, is it's the, any airport receiving federal funding needs to provide assurance that they will make the airport available for public use on a fair and reasonable scale, and will not unjustly discriminate against any kind or class of aeronautical activity or use of the airport. What commercial minimum standards will do for us is set kind of that baseline entry level standard of what we're looking for in a proposal for a commercial operator. So it's really a guide, it's not a legal binding document, it's more information-based. So in the document, it goes over insurance requirements, it goes over FAA certificates necessary to do aircraft maintenance, flight instruction, our average commercial activities we see on the airport. The minimum standards are necessary to remain in compliance with grant insurance moving forward, and when implemented appropriately, we will maintain that grant eligibility with fair and reasonable standards at the airport. The guide, it provides a guide, it's a permitting process to obtain a commercial operating permit at the airport. So there's several sections of the document. Section three is really where it goes into what we're looking for in a commercial proposal, line by line, similar to what happens when we put things out to bid, or RFQ, things like that. It spells out what we need in the proposal so we can review it and accept it. Most of the sections within it, we'll see a line that says that they need to lease the amount of space necessary for the operation, and that's really on a case-by-case basis. If it's a very small flight school, for instance, they wouldn't need to rent a whole lot of space, but we would consider things like restrooms or classrooms, and we want to ensure that any commercial operator does have the room and facilities to be capable of conducting their business effectively. There is also, with the commercial minimum standards, we will be coming back at the next meeting, the first meeting in January, for approval of the document, and one of the items that we would like to see is staff's ability to modify and update these administratively from time to time, and it would really allow us to, on the drop of a dime, be able to develop new standards for an operation that is not listed here now. Now, when we developed these, we did go through and brainstorm, and we think we have everything in here that we would likely see at the airport in the near future, maybe even some in the not-so-near future, but we went ahead and developed those standards anyways. So it's a very robust document, and it was developed very thoroughly. Again, it's a document that's just new to Casa Grande. Most airports have minimum standards in place, including all of our surrounding airports like Chandler, Marana, Eloy and Coolidge have minimum standards in place now. We're just at the point where we should implement them before we start seeing economic activity really blowing up at the airport, and with us getting our grant eligibility back, we're hoping to see some great improvements at the airport where we can start marketing the airport for commercial operators to come in. So this will set the stage and have us ready and prepared when that happens. We also included a section in here, if allowed to update these minimum standards, we have a process of doing that, and that section is in Section 2 point, or 2 dash 2 amendments of the minimum operating standards, where it states that the airport manager may, from time to time, propose to amend these minimum operating standards. When amendments are proposed, notice of the amendment shall be posted to the city's website in the airport terminal building and mailed and emailed to the Casa Grande Airport commercial operators. The notice shall include a 60-day public comment period, so we want to include the public in any amendments that we have to these. After which time, the conclusion of the comment period time, the proposed amendments and all the comments made during the comment period shall be reviewed, and if deemed appropriate, the city manager will approve or deny them. The approval of the city manager shall be final. And so that will allow us to update these and add new standards for, you know, one of the things that comes to the mind is advanced air mobility. It's a kind of a hot topic in the aviation world right now. EVTOLs, electric vehicles, are coming into play. We did not develop a standard for that, and the reason why is because there are no guidance or standards at the FAA level yet. So once they develop those, we will probably need to amend this and include it into our document as well. But that's what we have for amending and changing the standards, so it's got plenty of time for public comment and review, and then of course, final approval will be the city manager. The application process is Section 2 dash 3, and that goes over, in addition to Section 3, it basically goes over how to apply for and the process of obtaining a commercial operating permit. Now, the commercial operating permit could be attached to a lease license or agreement with the airport. Within the document, we also are able to issue permits to non-tenants. So, for instance, you could be doing flight instruction at the airport, but not leasing a facility or have classrooms on the airport, which, because you're still conducting the activity and there's a money exchange, we would still review it and approve it for a non-tenant. In that situation, we would just issue the commercial operating permit, and it wouldn't be tied to a lease license or an agreement. It just authorizes the entity to perform commercial operations at the airport. Some of the sections that it does go over is, in Article 7, it goes over fixed base operators. Again, something that we don't have now, but we could have in the future, so it does set that standard. We have special aviation service operators. These are primarily what we anticipate we'll be seeing in the near future, and that's for like hangar shade leasing services, aircraft sales, aircraft maintenance and aircraft part sales, aircraft rental services, flight training, commercial skydiving, aircraft component maintenance and service sales, aircraft charter and air taxi service, crop dusting, specialized flying services, and aircraft management services. It also has the commercial operating permits for non-tenants. Those are primarily going to be like our maintenance facilities. We see a lot of mechanics that come down from the flight schools or from Chandler, and what it is, is they're working out of the bed of their truck, they have all their tools and equipment, and they can come down onto the airfield and repair airplanes commercially. We also have a section, Article 10, for non-commercial activities, and this one raised a few questions in the development of it, and it was something the FAA really wanted to see in here, and it goes over, so flying clubs, they're not really a commercial, they're not doing commercial business, but because it's a club that generates revenue, it did fall under the commercial standards. And then private hangars is in here as well. And the only reason that private hangars is in the document is because if a hangar tenant were to sublease their hangar, it would become a commercial activity. We don't have any of that going on yet, but if somebody were to sublease their hangar, it would be revenue generating, and it would be considered a commercial activity, so that's why it's listed in the commercial minimum standards. And that is just about all I had. I'm more than willing to answer any questions or provide additional feedback if Mayor and Council have any questions.
Dave, if we can, before we get into the questions, perhaps you can give the Mayor and Council a bit of a context of the type of commercial activities, the number and the types of commercial activities that are transpiring on the airport today, and second, if you can provide for them a bit of an overview of the process that went through as you were developing these and how it gets brought to them. I know you talked about this coming back before them in a meeting in January for their consideration, but perhaps you can outline that as well.
Yeah, of course. So currently, we have two commercial operators on the airfield. One of them is the commercial skydiving, and the other one is an aircraft maintenance facility. And so what we're going to do is utilize this document, if approved, as a guide to develop a commercial operating permits for both of those. We will be working with them to ensure that this doesn't restrict or prohibit them from continuing to operate on the airport in any way. It's gonna be a very seamless, painless approach when we talk to these folks. Right now, I think the major change from what we're currently doing to this document is going to be the insurance requirements. I think one of the operators has the necessary insurance and the other one doesn't, but they're also, they're also a non-tenant, so they're operating, their business is elsewhere in town, and so they don't necessarily have to have the insurance for what they're doing at the airport. So we'll get more details on that. And the development of the, of the commercial minimum standards, we started the development with ADOT Aeronautics and the FAA. These are the two entities where we apply and receive grant monies for the airport primarily. Both of those entities have grant assurances. So anytime we accept federal grants or state grants, there are several grant assurances that we have to comply with to be eligible to receive the funds, and then we have to maintain that eligibility to prevent having to pay that money back. So it's really not a complicated process, and so long as we implement this appropriately, there won't be any issues with compliance. We developed this initially, the first draft of the commercial minimum standards, we took to the Airport Advisory Board in 2021, so it's been quite a while. We've modified it pretty heavily over the years to get it to this point, and so we took it to the board, and we did a whole matrix with each board member and got their input and feedback and development of it. And when we just recently took it last month back to the Airport Advisory Board, who did approve it, or I'm sorry, made a recommendation to Council to approve it, I'm not sure if those minutes are in your package yet or not, but they will be soon. But the board approved it, and so we're ready to put it into play as soon as Council is, if you approve it. And Larry, was there another item I, okay.
Anyone have any questions? Oh, Matt?
Thanks. Dave, I'm glad that we're here tonight. The airport's such a big economic impact on the city, and it's gonna continue to grow. And I liked seeing in here about an FBO, because I think we're getting close to that point. Have you had any interest yet from anybody that you know of, or?
No, and that was one of the heavily discussed items throughout the development of this is, some of the folks that were on kind of our committee that developed these standards were curious as to why are we developing standards when folks are not knocking on the door to come in here yet? Well, the reason why is so that we're prepared when they do. So currently, we do not have anybody interested, but again, as we start really, really beautifying the airport and fixing things up, and hopefully we can market the airport soon, an FBO could be something to be considered, and we could even, even though nobody's knocking on the door, it could go out as a procurement process, so we could put RFQ or RFP out to see if anybody proposes. We've done that before just with leasing facilities on the airport, and sometimes we don't get anything back, but it's at least going through the steps to say, hey, we've done everything we can to try to fill it, or try to bring somebody in here, and so that's the goal of the airport, is to grow economically and really see things thrive and flourish at the airport.
Yeah, so I'm glad that the, the skydiving stuff's behind us now, so we're moving forward. Tough thing about the airports that most people don't know is you have to go through FAA for everything, and then ADOT as well for a lot of it, so it gets, you have your work cut out for you, I'm sure, dealing with all those agencies. And then the next question I had is, I've talked to some other people, and we've had it in the past about length, you know, lengthening the runway, and I know there's a big wash out there that's gonna require some engineering. Has there been any talk of that, any plans yet for moving down that path now that we can get our grants going?
So part of the airport's grant preparation process is we develop a five-year plan, it's called our ASAP, and so in that five-year plan, we do see the several projects tied to the runway extension. That project in particular is gonna be a very large, very expensive and complicated project, primarily because of that wash out there. There's gonna be a lot of environmental assessments that are gonna need to be completed, could take, who knows how long, could take years before those come back and approved. But what we have currently on our five-year plan is, as if we were to extend the runway or the classification of the airport would change to a higher classification, so we would actually have to offset the parallel taxiway by about 150 feet, and so we would start by going ahead and moving that taxiway now, and then preparing for the actual extension to come down the road. And so we do have several projects lined up for that project in particular.
All right, thanks.
Questions?
Yeah. Dave, does this affect or regulate people in the business park as well, or just on the airport?
No, it does not, it doesn't, so the business park is a completely separate entity, so this is just for on-airport commercial activities.
Okay. If a, if a business is doing some type of airport business, and they have through-the-fence access from their property to the airport, does it then include them, or, I don't know where the lines are drawn out there?
So it could. It really depends on the proposal we receive. Once we get a proposal and it spells out what sort of activities they're looking to do, if there's significant activity on the airport, then we could build the commercial operating permit into their through-the-fence access agreement.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any more questions, comments? No? Okay. No, I just appreciate the work too. I mean, it looks like you've been working on this for a long time. My question is, you know, you're considering it a guide, so you talk about, you know, regulating, so is there flexibility in this? So if there's something that came up that wasn't in this guide, you know, how are you going to, you know, work with them, you know, to take care of whatever the questions or programs that are going on?
The answer is yes, so there is flexibility, and this doesn't spell out every single type of activity we may come across. These are just the general ones we thought should be in here, and so with the ability to modify these administratively, hopefully with your approval, and if we can do that, if we were approached by an entity that's not listed here, we would simply develop that minimum standard at that time, and then update the document.
Okay. And then kind of update as you go along, and?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And that's it, no other questions? So I think at this point, we're gonna be going into executive session, is that right, Larry?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff would ask that the Mayor and Council convene into an executive session, and I think, given the fact that we have individuals here, we can move upstairs to the conference room for the purposes of having the dialogue related to our judge position.
Okay. So with that, if anyone, you wanna stay, we're gonna be coming back, we convene at 7 o'clock for the regular council meeting, and we'll come back and close the executive session, correct?
Yeah, I move to go to executive session.
There we go.
Second.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay, there you go. Close our special meeting, and now we're going to start the council meeting. So we'll go ahead, call to order, and we'll start with the invocation, and I believe Anthony will be doing that. Followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from Mayor Protem.
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you, Lord, we thank you, Lord, for this opportunity that we can come together as a city. Father God, I pray that we walk in wisdom and knowledge, Father God, that we look to what's best for our great city. I pray, Father, that you cover our mayor and city council members, as well as our city staff, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for all that you've already done, all that you're going to do, and even the things that you're doing right now that we don't see, nor do we realize or recognize that it is you. So we forever give you the praise, forever give you the glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Anthony, and thank you, Matt. And thank you all for being here tonight. Sorry we're a little late, we had a meeting before this one, so thank you for being here. And Gloria, if you can, please note that all the city council is here. So noted. Okay, we're first with the minutes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would like to consider approval of the minutes of the council's special meeting December 2nd, 2024, approval of the minutes of the newly organized council regular meeting of December 2nd, 2024, and except for the record, the minutes of the Arts and Culture Meeting, November 11th, 24, the Historic Preservation Commission, July 22nd, 24, the Police Personnel Retirement Board Meeting for October 21st, 24, the Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting of October 17th, 2024, the minutes of planning zoning for November 7th, 24, Airport Advisory Board Meeting of November 26th, 24, and the Judicial Selection Committee of December 9th, 2024, as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. We can see it's been very, very busy from our committee, so thank you to everyone. Okay, claims.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve the list of claims for November 27th through December 10th, 2024. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to accept the claims. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. The meeting agenda. Larry, it looks like we have, or the agenda, is there anything we need to pull from the agenda at this point?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, nothing to pull from the agenda, but you do have an executive session, and while it's not material, you may want to do reports before we adjourn and do executive session.
Okay. Anything else? To amend?
Move in before end.
Yep. Report.
Right, okay. So is there a motion to move, to approve the agenda?
So move, move the report in before end.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Special presentations, we have some guests with us this evening, so Gloria. These are our new firefighters, all right.
Right.
They get younger and younger.
I pledge allegiance. I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear to faith.
That I will bear to faith.
And allegiance to the same.
Allegiance to the same.
And defend him against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of firefighter.
Of firefighter.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities. So help me God.
Congratulations. 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 No, and we just wanted to wish you all the best. Thank you for taking on this job and this service, so thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Uh, going to work.
I know. Don't mess around. Okay, the consent agenda. All items listed with the asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call of the roll call vote of this city council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a member of the public so requests, in which even the event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Anyone from, any staff? Anyone from the public?
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, so Gloria, there'll be a roll call vote?
Councilmember Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons.
Okay, next on the agenda is public comments, so if there's anyone here that would like to address the city council, you can come up and do so at this time, please just state your name, or if you can also limit it to three minutes at this time. The council will not be able to respond, but we can definitely direct you to a staff member that can help. So is there anyone here that would like to address the council at this time? Doesn't look like that, so we'll go ahead and move to the next item, which is award of contracts. So aye one, and it looks like Kevin.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the Mayor and City Council authorize the city manager to execute a service agreement with CNS engineers not to exceed $95,084, and this is for the design of the airport terminal parking lot reconstruction and expansion of that area at the airport. Staff did budget for this in this year's budget, and so we did, city council in the past has approved a five-year airport general services contract, and that was CG Contract 0121-2, and that was through ordinance number 3248, with the understanding that when individual projects came back, that we would bring them to council for authorization to move forward with those. CNS is on the authorized, an authorized provider for the airport through ADOT, and that's why we're using them for this project. This is an FAA and ADOT combined sponsored project, a little bit different than other grants that we have. Sometimes we get grants for design, and sometimes we get grants for construction. This is a combined grant for both. However, we don't get reimbursed for the design until we go under contract for construction. So the city will be fronting the amount of the design and then be reimbursed once we get the grant for construction. So a little bit weird, but it has to do with the timing of the funds that are available through this program in the FAA. And then we did note what portion of the grant will be covered by the FAA, and that's 91% or $86,583.50, and then ADOT and the city will share the 4.47% of the cost of the project at $4,250.25. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, does anyone have questions?
No question. No question.
Okay.
And just to note that this is gonna be the first grant that we're taking advantage of being eligible again, so we're happy to move this one forward.
Great.
I get.
Good, finally, right?
Yeah.
And you know, how long has it been, Kevin? Couple of years?
We started the process with the FAA and the Skydiver Issue in 2011, but the complaint was filed in 2013, I believe. So it's been a while.
It has been a while. More than a couple of years. Right. Okay, good job, we're excited for that. Okay, since there's no question, well Gloria, can we have a resolution number?
Yes. Resolution number 5730, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve resolution number 5730 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Gloria, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Romo? Yes. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tam Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes. Okay, item I two. Kevin.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve a bridging agreement to allow Allison Mills Construction LLC to provide construction services, and this is for our Rancho Grande sewer infrastructure repair project. And this will be a total amount not to exceed $505,000. Staff is requesting authorization to take advantage of, let me find my notes here, I apologize, we're taking advantage of a Pima County wastewater conveyance system and related facilities repair, rehabilitation, and construction services job order contract. What this allows us to do is work with Allison Mills, who provided costs for each of the services that are underneath that agreement, and utilize them for our Rancho Grande subdivision sewer line rehabilitation project. We're going to be taking advantage of a number of different types of repairs in that system. Total replacement for some sections, lining on other sections, so there's a variety of things that we'll be able to do through this contract. And it gets, gives the contractor the ability to go through, make that evaluation, and when we see problems, make changes on the fly to get the project done on time and within budget. This has been on our radar for quite a few years, so we're happy to get this contract in front of council for consideration. We did budget for this project in this year's budget, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions?
No question.
And Kevin, you did say it's been under our radar for a few years. So what, why, what is it that's happening that is why we have to do this and at this critical point?
So there's a number of different things. You know, we've had issues with our trash trucks driving down those alleys. Some of them had hit sinkholes, and it's because the line had failed. So we've run into a lot of different problems. Through that inspection effort, we realized just the condition of that particular subdivision. It's some of our oldest sewer lines in town, because of course Rancho Grande's been around for quite a while. Luckily, when we did our road repairs, all the sewer lines are in the alleys, so we don't have to tear up our nice new road. But we knew that ahead of time. So it's just part of our due diligence, looking at our system and identifying where those priority areas are. This is one of those.
Great. Thank you, Kevin.
Many more to come.
Yes, good. Okay, so Gloria, can we have a resolution number, please?
Resolution number 57, excuse me, 31. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Allison Mills Construction LLC for job order construction services for the Rancho Grande sewer infrastructure repairs, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Allison Mills Construction LLC.
Mayor Fitz-
Go ahead.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move approval of resolution 5731 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Gloria, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Romo? Yes. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tam Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes. Okay, I three. Kevin is here again.
Thank you. Staff recommends the mayor and city council award a contract to Allison Mills Contracting LLC, and this is for GMP one proposal in the amount not to exceed $5,899, excuse me, $690. And this is for the buildout of Treckle Road from McCartney Road south to Rodeo Road. So that'll be building that out to a full arterial section, very similar to what's south of that roadway. We did go through the process, and we hired Allison Mills as our construction manager at risk for both the Treckle and McCartney Road projects. We call this GMP one because it's under the same contract that we'll be utilizing for the McMurray part of it. But understand that there will be no more GMPs for this roadway segment. This is the amount to cover the entire cost of that buildout. That's really about it. We're just very excited to move forward with this phase of this project. And this is, just so council is aware, the bond projects that were approved by the voters, this is a phase in that effort. So we'll be also working with our finance department on getting those bonds ready for sale. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions?
I have a couple.
Sure.
This, I'm sorry, this is my stuff. So on your, right up here says $250,000 contingency, but there are two contingencies in the contract, one for utilities, one for owner at $250,000 each. Is that correct?
Let's see.
On the GMP, it showed, it showed two lines for $250,000.
So we do have a contingency of $250,000.
It's on line 20 and 21.
And those, yeah, and both of those, if I read the contract right, are reversible back to the city if they're not used, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So it is actually $500,000 contingency. And then my only other question is, on this GMP, did, did you have a independent construction estimate done, or were we just going off of their numbers?
We did. We have a firm that looks at those numbers, third-party evaluation.
So you did do the third-party evaluation on this one? Okay. Thank you.
How often do we do third-party evaluations?
We've started that about three years ago. We, we, we find that it really helps us look at the numbers that are being presented. It takes a fresh look, an outside look at, at how we're evaluating it. You know, sometimes we find that we're being overcharged in some areas, but, but most of the time, because of the contractors that we pick, we're very satisfied with the numbers. But it helps to have that extra layer of justification.
Good. Okay. Any other questions here?
Just, I'm glad to have an expert on the council now, to be honest. It's a true story. I mean-
Do most of the details on that.
Thank you. And I know the public is going to be very excited to see it, even though they're going to be frustrated driving down Treckle. But again, this is, you know, the voters voted on this bond, so we're excited. This is one of several projects to improve Treckle as, as, as well as McCartney, McCartney Road. So looking forward to it. Okay, so Gloria, can we have a resolution, please?
Resolution number 5732. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal from Allison Mills Construction LLC to provide construction manager at-risk services for the Treckle Road from Rodeo Road to McCartney Road improvements project, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing the transfer of budget authority, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move approval of resolution number 5732 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Gloria, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Romo? Yes. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tam Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes. Okay, item K one. And is this going to be you, Mary?
Yes.
Okay, Mary Allen.
So, good evening, mayor and council. We are requesting authorization to submit an application to the Arizona Department of Housing for the home grant for $880,000, or $800,000 for the housing trust funds and $80,000 for state funds for the owner occupied housing rehabilitation activities. We're also requesting authorization to use Community Development Block Grant and Program Income and Community Housing Development Fund as leverage, and as well approve the housing rehabilitation guidelines as presented. The Arizona Department of Housing announced a notice of funding availability for the state housing funds, home and housing trust funds on October 11, 2024. This is a competitive grant, and in order for the city to get a higher score in the application, staff is proposing to use OohHR program income, housing development fund, CDVG OohHR allocation, and any other funds to leverage the home application. Applications are due January 10, 2025. For new people, I probably should not use acronyms, and I apologize. Let me go back. Home is, that's just the name of the grant, Community Development Block Grant as well as Program Income and the owner occupied housing rehabilitation. If successful with the home application, the city will rehabilitate approximately eight homes, depending on the rehabilitation cost, which is, this grant is considerably more than previous grants. I believe they, the Department of Housing combined two years of funding into one application, which is better because it gives us more flexibility with scheduling. We have experience implementing this grant and have been used as a model program for other communities by the Arizona Department of Housing. We've completed a $350,000 home grant in July of 2024. With those funds, we completed six projects, two of which were new builds on the east side of the city. One construction project was $158,300, and the other one was $140,950. We utilize Community Action, Community Action Human Resource Agency as partners on these projects. They invest funds for the weatherization activities such as insulation, HVAC units, exhaust fans, appliances, which help us extend our grant funds. In addition to the home grant funds, we used $132,310 in CDVG money and $25,748 in program income. We currently have a home grant for $440,000 for six housing projects. We completed three projects as of today and have one bill, new build under construction on the east side. This new build is being built for $150,480. That included costs for asbestos abatement, demolition, and reconstruction. This, again, is a partnership with Cara, who will cover the weatherization portion. We are preparing for two additional projects as required by the grant. To date, we have encumbered $341,732 in home funds, $85,818 in CDVG funds, and $8,000 in program income to date. We will complete this grant by June of 2025. So anybody have any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions?
No.
Well, I just have a comment, Mary, since I was at the ribbon cutting of one of the homes today. And, you know, I really hope you guys, I think it was 311 West Second Avenue is the address, and if you're out and about, please drive by, you know, but it's so nice. It was a home that was built in the 80s and, you know, just not safe. You know, there, there's, you know, the restroom, you know, was like, I mean, so small, they had to like, kind of wiggle their way in to use the restroom. The kitchen, it just wasn't safe. There were different levels of flooring, and so they were part of this project, and it's, it's just a beautiful home. And what's great about this program too is it works in some of our neighborhoods to revitalize neighborhoods, and especially with affordable housing right now, and people are struggling to find affordable housing. And so it's a beautiful home. It's a family home that's been in this family for years and years, and so they're just happy this is their neighborhood. So I'm just, I'm just impressed with what you guys do, the whole staff, the contractor that you use, and, you know, just, it's really great. So we're going to make sure that we get you, get it on the calendars for all of you in the future when they have, when they have future ones. But it really is a great program. Thank you. So, anything else then? Okay, so we'll go ahead and move forward. Let's see. Gloria, can we have a resolution number, please?
Resolution number 5735. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing submission of a grant application to Arizona Department of Housing, authorizing the city manager to accept grant funds for the owner occupied housing rehabilitation program, authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement, authorizing the city finance director to accept and disperse funds as necessary, authorizing the transfer of budget authority, authorizing the use of certain funds to provide matching fund opportunities, authorizing other actions in support of the grant, and authorizing the adoption of the 2024 owner occupied housing rehabilitation guidelines.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move for approval of resolution number 5735 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Gloria, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Romo? Yes. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tam Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes. Okay, item K two. Is that you, Roberta?
Yes.
All right, Roberta, the finance.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Staff recommends that mayor and council approve the city's FY 2425 amendment to the consolidated fee schedule with an effective date of January 1, 2025. Notice of intent related to the amended consolidated fee schedule was posted to the city's website and social media at least 15 days prior to consideration of the adoption of the FY 2425 amended consolidated fee schedules. Fee and rate recommendations are based on cost recovery targets, the cost of providing services, and market comparison. All proposed adjustments are designed to assist with the recovering cost of services while adhering to each program's cost recovery philosophy. Departments and divisions with changes include the Community Service Department, Finance, Planning and Development, and Police. In addition to the proposed resolution, would grant explicit authority to the city manager to allow for temporary reduction in rates until, under certain circumstances, and expressly grant authorization for the city to provide promotional and marketing rates. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, Gloria, can we have a resolution number, please?
Resolution number 5736. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, declaring as a public record and adopting that certain- declaring as a public record and adopting that certain document filed with the city clerk and entitled FY 2024 through 2025 amended consolidated fee schedule, effective January 1, 2025, and establishing an effective date.
Motion.
Mayor, Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve resolution number 5736 as presented.
Sorry.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Gloria, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons.
Yes. K3, Scott, Human Resources.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, members of the council, the item before you now involves a recommendation to appoint Deiony Juarez a city judge for a two-year term and set the compensation for the term. This is the culmination of the charter mandated process that we go through every two years, the term of the city judge being co-terminist with that of the mayor. Charter mandates the formation, formation of a five-citizen judicial selection committee, which the council did appoint. The committee met and formulated its recommendation. That's before you this evening. As a matter of fact, you considered or had a chance to review the minutes of their meeting from a week ago today. The committee decided to forward three names, required to send two to you, including a recommendation to appoint, or practically speaking, reappoint Judge Juarez to the position, and then forwarded two additional names for your consideration. It's our normal practice. We provided information to you, all of the information that the three candidates provided to the city, and we provided to the committee, had been given to you this evening, along with salary information from the annual League of Cities and Towns Salary Survey. I'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, any questions?
Should probably thank the committee for doing that and for recommending Judge Juarez, and we just want to thank citizens for stepping up and doing that.
Yeah. Definitely. Thank you to the committee. Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, so can we have a motion?
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to appoint Judge Deiony Juarez a city judge for a two-year term and set the compensations for the term at range 88, step two on our schedule.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, so is this a roll call, or is it? Okay, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, Gloria.
Councilmember Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons.
Yes. Well, congratulations, Deiony, and thank you, and thank you to all your staff, too. Thank you. Two more years, Deiony. Goes fast, doesn't it? Every two years, you have to... Okay. Okay, public hearing. Let's see, item L1 will be Paul. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, Jaclyn Tsarnowski, our senior planner, will be making these presentations.
All right, good evening, mayor, council. The next few items on the agenda tonight are major general plan amendments. However, before we get into the specifics of these requests, I wanted to give a quick overview of our general plan and the process for major general plan amendments for our new council members. 2030 general plan was adopted by city council in January of 2021. It is required to be ratified by the voters, which was done by, in May of 2021, and effective in June of 2021. Cities are required by state statute to update this general plan every 10 years. However, there are opportunities to change these land use designations through the major general plan process for land greater than 50 acres. The city has done this on a two-year, twice a year. First round of applications are typically due in January with city council approval in June, and the second round of applications are due end of June with city council approval in December. There are also opportunities to request minor general plan amendments for areas less than 50 acres at any time, and these are typically conducted with a zone change request. Here's the city's general plan land use map. There are eight land use categories associated here, and in that, as you will see with these two general plan amendments, many are requesting to go into manufacturing industry. This land use was identified in our general plan that potentially needed additional acreage. These are designated to promote suitable areas for a variety of industrial and manufacturing areas, and are typically situated in locations to take advantage of regional transportation networks. That includes Interstate 8, 10, as well as the Union Pacific Railroad. So tonight's first major general plan amendment is to amend land use category from neighborhoods to manufacturing industry on approximately 2,250 acres of land generally located at the southeast corner of the Casagrand Maricopa Highway and Indian Valley Road. The site was previously annexed to the city and zoned for a mixed-use PAD plan area development in 2006. That was going with the market trends of that time. That mixed use was neighborhood, or single-family, multifamily, and probably a little commercial, but really, this wasn't probably a good area for this, being next to the road, and there are some floodplain areas in this area as well. So this requested amendment will facilitate an accommodating employment uses along existing and proposed industrial uses in your key transportation corridors, such as Huelaband Highway, I-8, I-10, Casagrand Maricopa Highway, and also the future I-11 corridor, as well as the UPPR. Here are the seven general plan review criteria. All criteria has been evaluated and covered within the staff report, and staff finds that all criteria have been met. Regarding stakeholder engagement efforts, per state statute, there is a 60-day review period for all government officials. These were sent to the city of Maricopa, as well as Pinell County. Notices were mailed to adjacent property orders, owners, and per state statute, planning and zoning commission are required to hold two public hearings at separate locations, which was done in October and November. Public hearing notices were published in the dispatch, as well as signs posted by the applicant. I did receive one phone call from an adjacent property owner wanting to know more about the process for a general plan amendment, and then we also did receive one letter from another adjacent property owner regarding circulation and transportation network in the area. Staff, applicant, and the adjacent property owner met with, met prior to the November Planning Commission meeting and to discuss transportation network in the area, and that will be ongoing as development occurs in this area. Next steps, if, this is the first step in the development process, is the major general plan amendment is approved. Next step would be for the applicant to file a zone change, either in industrial zoning of I-1 or I-2, or they could go with a plan area development, which is a customizable zoning for them. Zone changes would go to Planning Commission, as well as the city council for approval, and if the zoning is approved, the next step prior to building would be a major site plan application, which would be approved by Planning Commission. Each process has opportunities for additional public input and public hearing process. So with that, at the November 7th, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the major general plan amendment to amend the land use category from neighborhoods to manufacturing industry for 2,250 acres of land generally located at the southeast corner of Maricopa-Casagrand Highway and Indian Valley Road. Happy to answer any questions council may have.
Okay, any questions, anyone? You know, thank you, Jaclyn, for kind of going through the process a little bit. I think it's important for us to kind of slow down a little bit with new members and the public, so they understand. So thank you.
You're welcome.
For doing that. Okay, no questions, but this is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to speak on this item, you can definitely come forward at this time. Just state your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. There is no one, so the public hearing is closed, so no additional comments, questions? Okay. So, look for a motion.
Resolution.
Resolution, resolution number, sorry, Gloria.
Resolution number 5273.31, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending the city of Casa Grande 2030 general plan adopted by resolution number 5273 by amending the land use designation from neighborhoods to manufacturing and industry on property generally located at the southeast corner of Maricopa-Casagrande Highway and Indian Valley Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move for approval of resolution number 5273.31 as presented.
With a second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Gloria, can we have a roll call vote?
Mayor, please, Mayor Fitzgibbons, if I may.
Yes.
Prior to having a vote, most of the things you do require a simple majority vote. Major general amendments do require a vote of five members to pass.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, item L2, is that you, Jaclyn?
Yes.
Okay.
So this major general plan amendment is to change land use designation from rural to manufacturing industry on approximately 80 acres. This is located at the southeast corner of Clayton and Bianca Road, and this amendment is also part of proposed land annexation that is currently being processed and will likely be coming to city council in February. Again, here is our general plan review criteria. Again, all criteria has been evaluated and covered within the staff report, and staff finds that all criteria have been met. Again, regarding stakeholder engagement efforts, staff and applicant met all the requirements. Again, there was a 60-day review period. Notices were mailed to adjacent property owners. There was two public hearings with Planning and Zoning Commission, and no inquiries were received on this request. Comments? On these next steps for this project, as noted, if the major general plan is approved today, the annexation and zone change requests are tentatively scheduled for the February 3rd city council meeting. They are requesting an industrial zoning of I-2. It will be going to Planning Commission in January, just for a little schedule update. And if zoning is approved at that time, a major site plan application would go to Planning Commission for approval. Again, each process has opportunity for additional input and public hearing process. At the November 7th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted 7-0 to forward a recommendation of approval to city council to approve a general plan amendment to amend the land use category from rural to manufacturing industry for approximately 80 acres, generally located at the southeast corner of Clayton and Bianca Road. Happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, again, this is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to address the council at this time, you're free to, feel free to come up. Okay, no questions or comments, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And can we have a resolution number, please, Gloria?
Resolution number 5273.32, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending the city of Casa Grande 2030 general plan adopted by resolution number 5273 by amending the land use designation from rural to manufacturing and industry on property generally located at the southeast corner of Bianca Road and Clayton Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve resolution number 5273.32 as presented.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and Gloria, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons.
Yes. Okay, item L3, Jaclyn.
So this is a zoning text amendment. It may recall, some of council members had a few the last couple meetings, so this is our fourth one. This proposed zoning code text amendment is to allow for a corner side yard setback of 15 feet within the R1, R1A, and R2. However, if there's a garage door or front of a carport facing the street, these architectural elements should have a minimum of 20 feet in order to ensure a 20-foot deep drive, driveway is provided. The minimum front yard setback language has also been modified to match the corner yard setback, and in the urban ranch, rural ranch, and suburban homestead zoning districts, it's been amended to mid, the minimum corner side requirements from 50 feet to 20 feet. And here are some examples of a corner side. Here typically, it's currently at 20 feet, which would reduce to 50 to allow additional building. And then here's an example of architectural detail with a side-loaded garage allowing for a 15-foot setback. And then here's an example of where there is a corner side but would still need the 20-foot side yard setback because of the driveway, essentially where it'd be two, two front setbacks. There's another picture. Regarding notification effort, efforts, a display ad was published in the dispatch. No comments have been received. And again, at the November 7th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted 7-0 to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for requests by the city of Casagrand. For the following zoning code text amendment, said reservations, said revisions establish new minimum corner side yard setback requirements and revises front yard setback requirements. The following chapter is proposed to be amended. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions, comments?
I guess I just have a question. What, what's kind of driving the reduction in the setbacks? Is there a driving force behind this?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Beddelen, there's really a couple things that are driving this. You know, staff in general is, continues to try to amend our development regulations to, one, to be kind of best in class, and two, to, you know, improve, improve our processes. So Jaclyn, would you take me to the picture with the side-loaded garage? So, our front yard setback was already at 15, so this was already in code. But what struck us is that when you have a corner side yard, you essentially have two front yards. So we asked ourselves, why are we penalizing the people on the corner side? Go to the regular corner side, one before, right there. Why would we penalize this corner side yard to have a 20 where you can have 15 if the same top part of the structure was in the front yard? So we're just trying to, you know, it was kind of illogical. One of the other benefits, though, of allowing this is it kind of frees up more room in the rear yard for, where people can actually make use of that space versus the front, which is, you know, good for a streetscape appearance when you're driving down the street and make things look good, but pretty non-functional for the occupants. So those are the reasons.
All right, thank you. Just asking.
Good question.
Good question. Okay, any question, any other questions? Okay, so this is also a public hearing, so if anyone would like to come up, do you have any questions, if you would like to address the council at this time? Any, anything? No? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. We'll go ahead and if we can, Gloria, if we can have ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 1397.17.65, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending the land, amending the use tables in chapter 17.20 of Title 17 zoning relating to corner side yard setbacks, establishing the severability of the various sections of the ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve ordinance number 1397.17.65 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
May I clarify that second? Was that Edwards? Thank you.
Okay, Gloria.
I'm getting used to the voices.
If we can have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons.
Yes. Okay, so before we go into executive session, we did change and move reports up, so we'll go ahead and start, maybe Matt, we'll start with you.
Okay.
Tell us about the big ASU win.
Yeah, so, so only the second electric light parade I've missed in my tenure. The other one was for an ASU game as well. But I got to go to Dallas, but I wanted to thank, I, I needed some help supervising the, the young people that day, and I called on two new council, or one new council member, one, but they're both great with young people, so I want to thank Councilmember Rebecca Romo and Anthony Edwards for helping supervise the kids that day. They make it pretty easy. And the float got third place for best costumes for the, for the youth commission, so we were pretty excited about that. And if you didn't hear, ASU won the Big 12 championship. And then also this week, I'm sure everyone else, but I get to go first tonight, so police officer Samuel of our police department ripped the door off of a building to save somebody, so just, I mean, that's the kind of stuff we do here in town. Chief, pass it on. I'm sure we'll get to see him at some point here, but just a great story and good teamwork by the police and fire, and they, they helped save people, so that's doing their jobs in a, in a very unique way. And if you guys haven't seen it, there's a video online of his actual body cam video of him doing it, and it's pretty intense, and man, he gets it done. So I just want to thank, thank those guys for doing what they do every day in both police and fire, but again, Officer Samuel in the police department was first there, and he literally ripped a security door off to get someone out of a burning house, so that was great. And I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everyone, and you know, the city looks great, Danny, with all the lights and everything. Your crew did a great job once again, so thank you very much.
Good chat. Anthony?
The electric light parade was wonderful. I missed it for many, many years. This is my second year at the electric light parade, because my job had me elsewhere, and so, but it was wonderful, well-attended, well-attended, and so had a great time there. Just wanted to make mention of a couple things coming up. On Thursday, January 16, we have our unity march that normally ends here at city hall, but because of this construction that's going on out front, we're going to move that possibly over to Perp Park. So that's the ones with our students that will be coming out. So that's going to be on Thursday, January 16, and we'll start the march at 12:30 from Lynn Cola and walk down to Perp Park. And also Martin Luther King Day, service, Day of Service, our annual Day of Service. This is actually our third year doing it. It will be at Perp Park as well on January the 20th, and that also starts at 12 noon. We'll have great speakers coming, coming in for that. I'll be one. And so just wanted to make mention of those, and we'll make sure that we get the announcements out to all of our council members, our mayor, that you all know too, when that's going to happen, and other than that.
All right. How about you, Sean?
Ah, no real reports. I just wanted to tell the, the city staff, thank you so much. We got to go attend the Legacy Cities for newly elected officials, and that was well worth the time, and I really, really thank the staff and existing council and everything for recommending that we attend that, because it was invaluable for me, so, but that's, we just attended that last, this last week. It was great, but that's all.
Didn't scare you away?
No, did not scare me away. It was more interesting, it was amazing, it was really good.
Yeah, it is. Okay, how about you, Councilmember Romo?
I just want to say I'm looking forward to the unity march. We participate at the middle school, Cactus Middle School. We'll have all of our students there, as well as CGMS and Velago. And I did get to attend the electric light parade. It was amazing, as it usually is, and I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday, Happy New Year.
Amen.
I'm just going to add on to a couple of the others here. The Arizona League of Cities and Towns, that was a great event. Learned a lot there and got to meet some of the other newly elected officials from around the state, so that was, that was a pretty good deal. Electric Light Parade, I'm just going to pile on to the kudos to, to Danny and everybody out there. Cleanup was happening right up, right behind the, the parade guys, and I mean, it was just a great event all the way around. Well done by everybody, and then, of course, the police and fire for their, their people stepping up this past week. Couple of different incidents, and it was all handled very well, so kudos to the police and fire department as well.
Good. That's what happens when you're later doing reports, you're gonna.
I just get to pile on to everybody else. But Merry Christmas to, and Happy New Year to everybody as well.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Huddleston?
Yeah, Merry Christmas to everyone, and welcome to the new council members and mayor for your first full meeting. You're all doing a great job, and glad to see you here. And that's it.
Well, and I know it's so nice, it's been two weeks, so hopefully you're all, it looks like you're hanging in there. We're all here today. We got through it, but, but yeah, no, again, you know, this is the time of year, there's so many activities going on, so many meetings, you know, for everyone, people are trying to get in for the rest of the year, but, but the events, and there's so many great things going on, the, you know, the, the community services, but it was really everyone, the community services, our PIO department, our public works, you know, everyone that put on that, that event, and it's just growing and growing every year, and it's just a family event. I love it. I mean, you know, just seeing the kids running around and, you know, families, people, I had my chairs out at 8:00 AM, and no one, no one stole them, so that's really good. The chairs lined up all on Forest Boulevard, and it was great, so, so thank you, Danny and, and everyone, you know, all, all the staff that were there and the PIO team, you know, there are people that watch it online, you know, that don't get out, and, you know, several people told me that they saw it, so, so again, great, great job from that. You know, so many meetings, of course, I'm trying to catch on to, catch up to what, you know, Mayor McFarland did, so, you know, definitely attending meetings, you know, the first couple weeks, you know, Larry, thank you for, and, and all of you guys for being patient and, and explaining things and going to meetings and, you know, helping get through those, you know, there was just everything from the chamber, PRTA, the Penale Alliance for Economic Growth, I mean, they're just pretty much all, you know, first, first time meetings for me to attend at this level, so they've been all really good, and I'm looking forward to the exciting things that are going on and all the partnerships that are, that are happening here. You know, with, with the holidays around the corner, you know, there's, there's so many people that are giving so much to our community, and, you know, between Salvation Army, you know, they're giving trees and ringing bell, if you haven't done bell ringing, they're looking for bell ringers, so please just offer to help for an hour or two, because they really count on it. They'll be serving about 700 something kids with gifts this year. St. Vincent de Paul also is, you know, distributing food and turkeys, the Elks, you know, toys, and they're doing a Christmas meal, so, you know, a lot of things going on for, for our community. The MLK Martin Luther King, we're excited to see the activities going on this year. Those, those are growing every year, too, so you're right, the unity march is first on the 16th, and then the Martin Luther King Day of Service will be held on January 20th. So we'll make sure that we get the information out to the council and the staff, so hopefully you guys can attend that. So with that, I think that that is it, so if there's anything else, anyone, anything else, so just wish everyone a very Happy Holiday and Safe and Happy New Year, and we'll see you soon in a few, a couple of weeks.
Absolutely.
Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. So with that, we're going to adjourn. Oh, adjourn, sorry, go back. Executive session. Sorry about that, we're not adjourning, go back.
I move to go to executive session?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?